Hulu, Netflix, Peacock, Amazon Prime, Disney Plus. Streaming media services change not only people's viewing habits, but also change the dynamics facing WCTV. Content is tailored to specific viewer interests, which for the viewer is a good thing. It allows people to cut the cord and eliminate programming they neither watch nor need. An unforeseen consequence is that it impacts WCTV in a very challenging and costly way.
WCTV is funded almost entirely by a percentage of cable company's revenues based off the amount of cable subscribers we have in Wilmington. In short, less cable subscribers equals less revenue for WCTV. If you utilize any of WCTV's resources by creating your own program or watching local meetings and sports online and you are not a cable subscriber, there is a way to help. I hope you will consider making a donation so that we can continue delivering these programs and more to you. For those of you who have made a donation, I thank you. We do receive these and we are very appreciative.
We will start off, we have selectmen Kyra, DePalma, and O'Connell joining us via Zoom this evening. So they'll be participating remotely. So let's start off the evening here with a roll call.
Greg Bendel, here.
Kevin, you're muted. There we go.
The town of Wilmington is on mute, so we need to unmute.
Okay, go ahead. All right, go ahead, selectman Kyra.
Lill needs to unmute the town of Wilmington piece.
Okay, is that better?
Yes, thank you.
All right, sorry, roll call. Start with Kevin.
Kevin Kyra, here.
Gary.
Gary DePalma, here.
Judy O'Connell, here.
And Lill Maselli, here.
Greg Bendel, right here.
Yeah, you went first. We all heard you. Okay. We are just getting out of executive session, which was the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or other acquisition of real property at 201 Lowell Street, 64 Wildwood Street, and 333 Andover Street in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation position of the town as so determined by the chairman. I'd ask you all now to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral principle.
Thank you. First item is the transmitting of Treasury warrant numbers 12, 12A, 13, and 13A. Do I have approval?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second, Gary DePalma.
Okay, and then we'll do roll call. We have to roll call each time tonight because of the Zoom.
Kevin Kyra, yes.
Gary DePalma, yes.
Greg Bendel, yes.
Judy's on mute.
Judy O'Connell, yes.
Lill and Maselli, yes, thank you, so moved. Next is the approval of minutes from the August 16, 2021, meeting. Any discussion on that?
Based on my not being on the board, I'm going to abstain from this, just letting you know for purposes of discussion.
Thank you, selectman O'Connell.
We make a motion, we approve the minutes of August 16, 2021.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
In a roll call, please.
Kevin Kyra, yes.
Gary DePalma, yes.
Judy O'Connell abstained.
Greg Bendel, yes.
Lill Maselli, yes. Next, we are going to move on to appointments. Our first one will be Elizabeth Lawrence, temporary town clerk, Anthony Laverty, GIS manager, in regards to establishing precincts following United States Census results.
So if I could perhaps just introduce this and perhaps Beth Lawrence and Tony could come over to the table here and you'll recall back in, at the last meeting in August, or actually it was the first meeting in September, this topic was introduced, which was with the new census, 2020 census, all communities across the country have to go through a redistricting process. In our case, as you know, we have three, six precincts right now, and per the rules that are established through the state, we cannot have more than 4,000 residents in any given precinct, and there are other particular rules that, parameters that are established in terms of modifications to the precincting. So the intent for our last meeting was to introduce this to the board, give the board an opportunity to ask questions, take it under advisement, so to speak. What we'd be looking for this evening ideally is for the board to authorize the adjustments that were made to the precincting so that we can submit the information to the Secretary of the Commonwealth. There's a particular division within the secretary's office that deals specifically with the precinct modifications, and then they will ultimately review this, and then we will be set the deadline to get this information to the Secretary of the Commonwealth is before the end of October. And I'll leave it to Ms. Lawrence and Mr. Laverty to answer any questions or go into any details. Ms. Lawrence, and you want to talk about maybe some of the parameters that went into how we made the modifications that are in place here?
So there are a couple of requirements that the state asks of every community. One of them is you don't split up any of the blocks. There can't be any like long, narrow, misshapen precincts, so like finger-like shapes. There can't be any area or location that would cause a disadvantage to a minority. Tony did a lion's share of the work involved in this, but we worked hand-in-hand with the Secretary of State's Election Division. It was an option, we didn't have to, but they offered it to us. So we submitted the block graphs, the, all the work that Tony put into the reprecincting app, and they reviewed it and sent it back to us as acceptable. This isn't the group that's going to be voting on this, but they work hand-in-hand with them, and this would kind of expedite the process so that you don't have unanticipated problems later on. So I don't know if Tony, you want to add anything to that?
Well, no, just we were trying to, you know, one, stick with the state, with the state requirements, you know, being that they had to be, you know, no more than 4,000 people. I took into account that precincts one and two vote together, and precincts three and four vote together, and five and six. So when I, when I was trying to make the block shifts, because you, because you have to keep all of the blocks together, you can't split census blocks, I was trying to make it less, you know, it's, you know, I wanted to have it so that, you know, that there would be as little amount of changing voting locations as possible, and we got it to the point where I believe it's only two, only about 200 households are actually going to change their voting location. So I, you know, just as far as making the numbers work and making it less, you know, as little disruption as possible, I think this was, you know, ended up being, you know, the best result that we could come up with.
Madam Chair, if I could, I think it's important to note that that was really a focus for us to recognizing that we had to abide by the parameters that are established, trying to minimize the impact. So as Mr. Laverty said, there's, I believe, 203 families that will need to vote at a different location, and as I understand it, he went through a number of different permutations, if you will, with different modifications of bounds. One of the things that, one of the requirements that is in place is that you have to use significant geographic features, whether it's a roadway, or a river, or some feature like that, to establish these bounds. So that went into the situation as well. Clearly, one element of this, if the board is inclined to approve this this evening, is that we will need to inform voters about the precincting. One of the steps it will be taking, and certainly I've had this conversation with Ms. Lawrence, is that when the census is issued in January, there'll be a piece on the census that identifies each individual's precinct, the precinct that they will be voting in, and then specific to those folks that will be impacted with a change, they would get a separate card that specifically states, you know, your prior voting precinct was X, your new precinct as of January 1st will be Y. So we want to make sure, and we'll certainly use social media and other avenues to get the word out.
Any discussion on this? Mr. Bendel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Town Clerk, Ms. Laverty. Thanks so much for being here again and for all the work, and this isn't very glamorous work, I know this is, there's a lot goes into this, so I really appreciate you guys doing this for us. I do have one question, just to clarify, I mentioned earlier, 203, 200, I think you mentioned, is that households or voters?
That would be households, that would be changing their, their voting location. There are more that would be changing precincts, but they would be changing from, from one precinct to another within the same voting location.
And so I think certainly those are the ones we specifically want to target with the, you know, perhaps a direct mailing, a reverse phone call, or both, in addition to, you know, advertising in the paper, but, you know, there's such a small number, relatively small number, that we certainly don't want to make sure that, you know, they didn't miss it on social media or something like that. So whatever we can do to try to get the word out specifically to those folks, I think would be great, and again, I appreciate your work on this. Thank you.
Any further?
I have a question, if I may, is that of that 203 that was discussed, and I have the paperwork in front of me, and forgive me if it's, if it's clear and I'm not seeing it, is are certain precincts impacted, or did every precinct have a redistribution in the sense that, so for example, you know, at the local level, you know, we have six precincts, but from a state rep perspective, precinct three is covered by Ken Gordon, for example, you know, can you just articulate what precincts were impacted, just so we know how that might change, you know, an election landscape?
Sure, the major, the largest area that is going to be, that is going to shift-
Mr. Laverty, if you could just speak up a little bit, I know the folks here, the audience needs a-
Sorry. So the largest area that's going to be impacted by a change in voter location is, is right around Silver Lake, is going from precinct five to precinct one, and that was just based on geographic location, the number of people, and the, just, just the numbers of people in those block groups, and just how it fit into the map.
So in essence, precinct three is unchanged?
I wouldn't-
I think it's changed since this precinct.
So if I can actually bring up this map, this is actually the new precincts overlaid on the old map, so, so a little bit of, so some of precinct three is going to precinct four, and some of precinct four is going to precinct three. Just some areas along over near 93 are going to get absorbed into three, and a couple of areas over off Lowell Street are going to go into four, but it's not a ton of, if I zoom in on the map, I can actually show you how many people are, how many residents are actually involved here. So this is probably about 200 or so residents going from three to, from four to three here, and then probably about an equal number going the other way.
Sorry, can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What did you say about three and four?
So with three, so with three and four, there are two areas of precinct four that are going to now be voting, oh, there were, so there were, there was one area of precinct three that's going to be voting in precinct four now, and one area of precinct four that's going in precinct three. So basically, just swapped areas here.
So population-wise, in terms of the net effect on the number of voters, it's largely an offset?
It's about, yeah, it's, it's about an offset. I think it's about, just off the top of my head, math, it looks about 230 voters going into precinct four over here, and about 200 going the other way, so it's a very-
So I understand that, I mean, Jeff, I don't know to what extent that you think this is a relevant point, but I would not assume that every layperson will potentially know that their state rep is now different as a result of the change. You would, you would think that they would, but they may not know that now that they are covered by a different state rep.
Certainly, that would be part of our, our effort to convey any, anyone who's going to have a change in state rep that, along with, you know, the precinct and voter location, that, that people understand if their, if their particular rep has changed, that would be part of the package.
Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure that that point's made.
Madam Chair, may I make another point? I'm, in terms of informing residents, and I'm sure maybe you've already thought of this, so forgive me if you have, but we'll, we'll have a trial run, if you will, in early March before the April 23 election, where folks may come to a town meeting, and when they come to register, they may find out that this has changed, and so perhaps maybe we have, you know, a flyer for them to take home with all this information on, when that time occurs, and perhaps, I know, again, you've thought of that, but I just want to throw that out there, and just another way to inform folks, we'll have an opportunity in March, it looks like, to inform them before they actually go to the polls in April.
And we now use-
So Chair-
Yes, go ahead.
Is it possible, Tony, thank you for doing this, you know, together, Jeff, working on this, is it possible to give us what the old population was, how it broke down from precincts one through six? I know you gave us the news.
So I know that as far as the 2020 census goes, if we were to keep the same boundaries, we would be over the 4,000 population in three different precincts, so-
No, I guess that's not my question. So in precinct one, it now goes to 3,927. What was it? Precinct two goes to 3956. What was, you know what I mean, what, what?
What were the, what were the, what were the 2010 numbers? I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what the old numbers were off the top of my head. We might have it in this packet.
But I assume it's somewhere because you have to-
I have it here, so, so in the old, so in, in 2010, precinct one had 3,703, precinct two had 3,613, precinct three had 3,597, precinct four had 3,763, precinct five had 3,826, and precinct six had 3,823.
3820, you said?
3823.
And those were the numbers from 2010, not the numbers that came out of the 2020 census?
Yeah.
I'd have to see if we have that in here as well.
So basically, our population grew as a town from, it was 22,325 in 2010, and it's now 23,49, now 23,349.
These are all your precinct numbers. Mrs. DePalma, do you have any questions?
No, I have no questions right now. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Walk for us.
Any further questions or for the board? No?
So this is a board to consider on the agenda later on, so it's up to the chair as to whether you want to address that now, or address it in later under Board to Consider.
Would the board like to take this matter now? Would you like to wait? Do you feel ready?
From my standpoint, in the interest of time, I'm fine taking it up now to that point. I would make a motion to-
So let me just suggest that the motion be to hereby certify that at a meeting held on Monday, September 27, 2021, the Board of Selectmen voted to accept, as presented by the town clerk, the 2020 reprecincting plan and map for the town of Wilmington.
Do I have a motion as stated by Tom Andrew Hall?
Yes, I can add that motion. Mr. Hall, I, I don't know, do you, do you want to use the word interim town clerk, only because that's the title you consented to us? I, you know, whether that matters in the Secretary of State's office, I don't know. It certainly doesn't matter, it certainly doesn't matter to me, and-
No, I, I think we're-
I want to make sure that it's not appropriate.
Right, I think, I think we're fine as it is.
Okay.
Okay, so we had a first and a second, all in favor, roll call, please.
Judy O'Connell, Kyra, yes. Kevin Kyra, yes.
Yeah.
Greg Bendel, yes.
Okay, Lill and Maselli, yes.
And just for confirmation, there is a document here that members of the board will need to sign prior to sending this off to the state. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you both, appreciate all the work you've done.
Thank you.
Okay, next, under appointments, we have George Hooper, Public Building Superintendent, Dan Pallotta, P3 Owners Project Manager, Lee Morissette, Principal, and Marco Chris, I'm going to say that's right, Chris Cresscatini, AIA Lead AP, Senior Architect of Deeds and Company, and Philip O'Brien, Principal, and J. Stuart Roberts, AIA Principal, Johnson Roberts, regarding the senior center and town hall slash school administration site selection. Thank you all for being here tonight.
So while they're transitioning in setting things up here, let me just offer a few opening remarks, and then I will turn it over to Dan Pallotta. So you'll recall that at a recent town meeting, the town voted to approve funding for both feasibility and schematic design for a senior center, and feasibility and schematic design for a town slash school administration building. The two committees have been set up to achieve that goal, one being the senior center committee, and the other being the town school admin building committee. Many of the members work on both committees, certainly our permanent building committee members are on both, but there are also representatives from the Board of Selectmen Finance Committee and others that serve individually on each committee. So the first effort here is really to establish a site for each of these projects, because the site is going to dictate to some measure, certainly the design and of the building and the cost. So this is really the first, I would say, major milestone, so to speak, and part of the process that we went through in getting to this point is to hire an owners project manager. This individual is schooled and an expert in public building construction, and really serves as the town's representative. You'll recall, we had a similar representative when we did the high school. Dan Pallotta from P3 is, is our point person on this project, and with that, I'll turn it over to Dan to talk about the method that we used to arrive at where we are tonight with a recommendation to the board.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
My little green light wasn't on, so I didn't know, I didn't know whether they could hear or not, so. My name's Dan Pallotta, as the town manager had indicated, when we started down the process, we started with the senior center first. We selected, we selected Deeds and Company as our designer. Shortly thereafter, about a month or so later, we selected Johnson and Roberts as the designer for the school administration and town hall project. As we began looking at the sites identified in your master plan, there were four sites, the Whitfield School, the, the site of the Old Swain School, the Glenn Road Town Hall site, and Middlesex Ave site across from the registry. What became apparent was that both committees would need to at least co-join during the site selection process, so that we were, weren't battling each other, but we were working together. The two committees met and adopted a matrix to look at the sites objectively and subjectively. They voted on the criterion, and then we populated the criterion on the sites to help us come with a recommendation. During this process, two sites rose to the top, one for the senior center, and one for the town hall and school administration. I don't know if you want me to put that matrix up? Would that be helpful? I don't know if you can see that.
So members, members of the board do have the matrix.
Oh, they do?
Yes.
Okay, so I don't know.
Well, so for the public, certainly.
Yeah, the public, and, yeah.
So the senior center rose to the St. Dorothy's site at 130 Main Street, and the town hall school administration to the area in, in front of the existing Bazell Center, which we called the Town Green Site, which is where the Old Swain School was. We're here to answer any questions you have. The vote to adopt the matrix was unanimous by both committees at a joint meeting of all members and liaisons.
Madam Chair, perhaps if, if Mr. Pallotta could-
Sure.
-go through some of the criteria that were used.
Sure.
We had two categories, one that was pretty much black and white, and then the other categories were somewhat subjective.
So the objective criteria were wetlands restrictions, water service availability, sewer service availability, gas service availability, electric service availability, and storm water service for overflow. On, on that criterion alone, St. Dorothy's and the existing town hall both scored perfect scores. The Whitfield School site scored a 42, and the Town Green Site scored a 46. On the subj, on the subjective criteria, adequate building area, adequate parking area, use appropriateness, proximity to institutions and resources, site visibility, vehicular access and traffic, to traffic, future expansion potential, existing developmental impacts, project sequencing impacts, topography, and relative site development cost and complexity. And those were populated by the designers of each project. And the Town Green Site had a 168 for the senior center and a 186 for the town hall. The existing town hall had a 117 for the senior center and a 100 for the town hall. The Whitfield School had an 86 for the senior center and an 88 for the town hall. The St. Dorothy's had a 190 for the senior center and a 143 for the town hall school administration. During the deliberation, selectman Kyra had indicated that he wanted us to take a look at using the ball fields, something that we did not do in our criterion, and the designers went back and, and looked at using the ball fields as, for a couple of years while we're building the building, and it rose the score of the town hall, of the senior center to 145, and the town hall to 127.
I'm sorry, using the ball fields for what?
A putting building.
As part of the project.
As part of the project.
Okay.
So the initial, the initial task- So the initial, the initial task that we had gone was to not take any ball fields. We were gonna
Yeah.
use this site and squeeze a building on the site, knock the building down, redo the parking lot. So we, we, we looked at putting a building on the ball fields, losing the ball fields for a couple of years, and then, and then finishing that way. Either, either way, it remained St. Dorothy's and the Town Green Site.
Thank you. Any open up to the board for discussion questions?
Sure, might as well stop. I, I think that need to look at this a little closer. Mentioned that the designers went back and came with different figures. They didn't go back, they did it that night. And they didn't have, I don't believe, the adequate time to walk the fields and look at the whole issue in design of the town hall and senior center. Say that they went back, not really accurate. They sat there and they provided field. I asked the impact on the fields because I wanted to know how much of the fields would be taken. Now, one of the designers, when we had met, also indicated in the meeting that you could actually build a town hall or a senior center right beside the current town hall while the town hall was being built, plenty of room. So that's something that was mentioned but not taken into account. The other thing that wasn't taken into account in the metric was doubling of the site. What I mean by that is, can you fit the town hall and the senior center on one site, that being Glen Road? And then we utilize St. Dorothy's for a new field and give that an option. That wasn't given adequately. You know, I had a couple of people come up to me that truly want to keep Swain Green as it is and not touch it. They want it as, as an open space area. They don't want to bring down the Bazell School because they feel that it has historical value to it. And they want to make a point in saying that there are activities there that go on. There is a carnival that happens, there is a Christmas event that happens, there's yard sales and flea markets that happen there that take up the whole area in addition to farmer's market and so on and so forth. But also, and I didn't say to count the number of cars that happen, that the students use for the school. And then you have the football plays and everything else that goes along with it. So I don't know if any of that was taken into account. And the other thing that strikes me is, I know that the senior center, that he wanted St. Dorothy's, and it was mentioned at the meeting that they could build walking trails and pickleball courts and bocce courts. Well, we already have walking trails at the Glen Road. I envision maybe an Eagle Scout group on a project and fixing it up. But we have walking trails. We have pickleball courts that the town just spent $80,000. We have a basketball. We have swings for the kids. Why are we reinventing what we already have that's at the Glen Road? And most importantly, you have one access in and one access out. And as it was described that night, was that we would have, if the senior center went to St. Dorothy's, we'd have two access points, that being on 38 and the other being on Glen Road, which I think would be easy to cut through regardless of whether you could see bumps or not, and could be a hazard. I'd rather the seniors be safe, and if the Glen Road is destroyed, it should be. Now, you mentioned here about parking. How much parking do you need for a town hall?
It depend, that depends on the exact size of the town hall.
Okay, so
Based on, if I
How much parking for a two-story building at St. Dorothy's do you need?
So can I answer your first question, Selectman? So with regard to the town hall, the program that we presented to your committee was
150 spaces based on the square footage.
150 spaces based on the square footage for the town hall project.
Town hall needs 150 spaces based on the square footage. And the town hall will be structured with the same departments that we have now in the current town hall, pretty much?
Pretty mu- pretty much, yes.
And how many parking spaces
Just to
of a two-story building can you put in at St. Dorothy's?
Again, you'd be required to put 150 spaces. I think we were looking at the number of spaces based on the zoning bylaw of the town.
Well, that's not answering the question. If you, if you drilled it down, you'd be able to tell me how many parking spaces can fit into St. Dorothy's. I mean, the senior center would want to know how many
We haven't
parking spaces they can use as well.
We haven't, we have not developed the sites yet, so
Well, you're asking us to vote on something that you haven't developed.
Well, we, we have a lot of data, we have a lot of data to do on each of these sites, including survey, geotechnical, and, and layout to the, you know, to the tenth of an inch. And so the, the purpose of the matrix and the purpose of selecting the criteria is to whittle it down and develop a site. Now, obviously, when we start developing the site, all of the things that you've brought up, for example, the Town Green, the number of parking spaces, the student parking, all those things will be taken into account. The, the, the plan that we showed
I don't know how they can vote on something
The plan that we showed your committee, the meeting before we worked on the matrix to, to identify that the town hall could fit, actually showed 240 parking spaces. There were 90 additional spaces for, for students on that site. So there
Well, there's over, there's over 300 spaces on that site now. So that means that you're going to reduce the parking at the Swain Green if you say it's 240.
Well, that, that was not without looking at the upper part of the site either. That's just the lower part of the site. I mean, once you put a, you're gonna, well, obviously, putting a building there is gonna cut into the number of spaces since the entire site is almost paved.
Well, you just said you would take into account the student parking, so obviously you're cutting back the student parking if you do.
We're, we're following the zoning for a town hall, school administration building, and adding 90 spaces for student parking. If you have 300 students that are parking in that space, we're clearly going to be short.
The answer is yes, there's only parking. So I, I talked to Town Manager Hall, and he says that the maximum amount that he's observed at a town hall is 40 parking spots. So I believe that you could put, put a two-story building with 40 parking spots at St. Dorothy's very easily, and probably be more than 40 parking spots at St. Dorothy's. But we don't know that because that work hasn't been done for us. And we don't know if a senior center would fit more nicely behind a town hall at the Glen Road because
I, I mean
Well, because we don't know how it's going to impact the fields.
Right.
And as regards to impacting fields, I mean, don't, let's not forget, we have Yentile Farm, and I know that the Recreation Director, she does a yeoman's job in permitting that, that facility. And I'm sure that she can permit that facility for first come for the women residents of the other town. The other question that was brought up was a community center thing on the second floor of the senior center. That a senior center would be in it, within itself for the senior center. That there'd be a community center above to allow for the entire community to take advantage. I mean, but that, that hasn't been presented and discussed as well. Yeah, I think that there's a lot more that you need to do. And, and quite frankly, Dan, have you, when we hired you and we did the OPMs and did the architects, one of the big things that I recall, and I may be wrong, and one of the board members can correct me, was that social media was a big, huge part of your job in taking surveys of the community and, and having public forums and finding out what the public needs. You know, the buck stops with the Board of Selectmen, but the, but it's the residents that are paying the bucks. So I, I guess, you know, have you done the surveys? Have you done the public forums so that we can get a feel for what the residents want in, in these facilities? I mean, you know, Pop Warner, have you contacted Pop Warner and Little League? Do they want new fields over at St. Dorothy's? Do we want a double site at St. Dorothy's? I mean, at Glen Road? Just, just a lot of questions that, that need to be answered. And I don't know if we, maybe we should write all these questions down and send them.
If, 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 if I may respond, I'd, I, I'd like to respond to each and every, every comment if I could. With regard to reaching out to the community, I have nothing to reach out to the community with yet. We haven't started the design, we haven't walked through anything but programming. Our directive to design a senior center comes from Article 14 of your town meeting, and our directive to, to do a town hall
You're fading it and out, Dan.
You're
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. You're fading it and out.
Your directive, your directive to do a town hall comes from Article 15, your directive from a senior center is Article 14. There is no directive for us to look at and remove and replace fields. We are following the directive of the, of the articles that you passed. If you want to expand on that, obviously, we can, but that's not what was passed.
Those articles, had you looked at those facilities, fields or not, who directed you not to look at the fields? Because that's not what the town meeting voted for. They, they, they voted for you to look at the entirety of that. So, so I realize that you had a meeting, I believe, there was a subcommittee meeting that included yourself and Mr. Hooper, and then Mr. Hall, and I don't know if the architect should, who else was at that meeting? And what was discussed, we have not received any minutes. And, and it includes the whole parcel, not just abortion, but maybe at that meeting, it was discussed and it was decided upon that it'd just be abortion. So, so who did that?
So the RFP that hired the OPM and the RFP that hired the designer specifically lays out four sites for the replacement of the Bazell Center and the town hall, school administration function. We are following the guidelines to which we were hired and to which your master plan is guiding us. I mean, don't get me wrong, we'll, we'll study anything you want to study, but we are following your master plan, which had the four sites and the, and the RFPs that hired both the designer and the OPM. And I think, and I think we've come up
My question was, who instructed you?
We've come up with, we've come up with a recommendation which was voted on by both committees unanimously.
Yes, and I was one that voted on it, and just to get it to this point, so we could have a discussion amongst the Board of Selectmen, because they're the ones that I guess ultimately are making a determination of. So that's why I voted in favor to come here and to discuss this further, because these issues that I'm bringing up to you tonight were the same issues that I brought up to you
At the meeting.
the night when the two groups met, and I got feedback from some of the youth groups who thought it was a great idea to put the town hall and the senior center on one piece of property and build in new fields over at St. Dorothy's. I, I mean, there are so many variances, there are so many options. And you say you've got an RFP, but that RFP didn't say, "Cut out the fields or cut this portion out." It didn't say that to you. And so who, who told you to cut that out?
Let me, let me address the question of the fields. So there was a, I think, one or more conversations, and I don't remember exactly how many, but certainly conversations that, that I had with the OPM, and I think George Hooper may have been present, was present. And I did not believe it was advisable to take the fields out of circulation for the purpose of constructing a facility, in part because we, we, not too long ago, spent, as you mentioned, $80,000 on pickleball courts. We spent $75,000 on lights to light the field. We've spent money on fencing over there. So the fact that we've expended a pretty good amount of money was one concern. The other concern I had was taking those fields out of commission would take them out of commission for at least two, perhaps three years because of the process that, you know, we'd have to go back to town meeting and get an appropriation for new fields somewhere. I don't believe we would be able to accommodate all of the Pop Warner activities and the Little League, certainly couldn't accommodate Little League at Yentile. So it, long and the short of it was, I was concerned that if we tried to interfere with the activities on those fields, we would have automatically two constituencies that would be opposed to this project, and I was not wanting to create that risk.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Hall. But we don't know if we'd have two constituencies against that, and to see how our Director of Recreation would be able to utilize the Yentile field for Pop Warner and soccer. I understand Little League might be an issue. There are fields to accommodate them. And then I go back to one of the designers who said that we can build a facility right to the right of town hall while keeping town hall active. So if you're keeping town hall active while another building is being built, then there must be access to that town hall, which means there's access to the fields in the back. So, you know, maybe there's a different entrance route that, that's created for that. So we, again, we don't know, because we haven't explored that opportunity yet.
That, that's
Keep those fields active while maybe a senior center is being built
That's, that's not, that's not entirely true.
Which includes, that will maintain the pickleball court and whatnot. And I believe Mr. Hooper mentioned that there was a concession stand over there for Pop Warner, what would happen there. And I said, well, we don't know if we'd have to, and build a new one, bigger and better. But we don't know how much impact would be to the fields until someone does that work for us.
So, so if I, if I may
Yeah, Mr. Pallotta, go ahead, please. Go ahead.
If I may
Till we talk.
So those were taken into consideration. We've demonstrated that we can do that. We've demonstrated we can fit a senior center here. We've demonstrated that we can fit a town hall on this site. It just doesn't rise to the level of the other sites. It came in, it came in third. On both accounts, it came in third. Those, those factors were looked at. The only factor that wasn't looked at, as you have articulated over and over, is the use of the fields. And we, you know, we, initially, we believed that was beyond our purview.
Unfortunately, Mr. Pallotta wasn't, wasn't. Let's, come on, let's face
Okay, I'm gonna interrupt right here. Mr. DePalm has been waiting patiently for a question, but I am gonna interrupt. We're talking about the ball fields now for 15 minutes. Why wasn't this brought up months and months ago? Why is it bringing it up tonight?
I don't know, Chairman.
I mean, are you not on one of the committees? I don't know who's on what committee, but why wasn't this brought up? It seems like this is a surprise. So I don't understand why it's being brought up. I personally don't think ball fields should be touched. There's no room, as it There's no room as it is. The kids are going to other towns. The ball fields should not be touched. That's my opinion. I don't, I think this conversation is over for this evening as far as ball fields, and we're not getting anywhere. Mr. DePalma, please ask your question.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. This is the most confusing presentation I've seen, not just since I've sat on this board, but also as I've, I've been involved with the town. I personally believe right now what we should do is you should go back to the drawing board and write up a presentation that we know what is happening. The citizens of this town know what's happening. I mean, it's mass confusion right now. This ball field, that ball field, this car space, that car space. You know, I, I, I believe that until we get the figures down on how many parking spaces do we have? Do we need? How many parking spaces do we have? That's one. Ball fields, let's discuss them on a different venue. And as Madam Chair said, I don't think we should be touching any of the recreational facilities in the town. Right now, though, I believe that you should go back and get a presentation together that we can see, we can appreciate, and we know what's going on. Thank you.
Mr. Bendel or Ms. O'Conne, do you have any questions or discussion so we can move this along?
You know, I, I understand that I'm sensing the frustration regarding the ball fields, but I, I don't think that, I think Mr. Kyra does have some valid points, and I agree with Mr. DePalma in terms of, you know, I understand the matrix and the scoring that was done, and I can appreciate all the work that was done on it by both committees. And I know that, that, you know, they, they had a vote, and I understand the comments by the gentleman that indicated that, you know, they've done what they've been chartered to do up to this point. I do think that some of the public involvement, you know, should be part of this. I understand that that may be coming later in the program, but that means you would have gone down the track a little bit too far in any one of these sites before you getting public input and then having to switch gears potentially midway when the residents of the town give some additional feedback. You know, that is concerning to me. The Town Green site, you know, I have concerns about that. I have concerns about how it impacts the, you know, student parking. I have concerns about the topography over there in terms of the Swain School, for example, flooded out for years and had a lot of damage over the years. I'm concerned about stormwater management over there. It's a myriad of different concerns, but I want to respect, you know, what the committee has done and on both ends. I understand that both sides are very passionate about their respective projects. I don't want to see them pitted against each other. But I, you know, I, I don't feel comfortable in endorsing a plan tonight based on how this information was presented. I was not at the joint meeting. I was not able to attend it. Perhaps I need to do some homework to get more school done, a few things. But I am not comfortable voting in favor or not in favor. I think we should table it and take no action. I don't want to send the perception publicly of voting something down. That's not the case. But I think that this board needs more time to formulate questions and to get a presentation that, you know, we can understand a little bit different than just matrices with numbers and metrics that, you know, I think would be beneficial to the overall. So, those are my, my comments on a preliminary level. I don't know if anyone has anything to add.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Gentlemen, thank you all for being here tonight. Appreciate it. I, I want to make sure that we're not losing sight of one thing. The matrix, although maybe confusing to some, or it can seem like maybe overwhelming when you take a look at this eleven by seventeen, double sided. The one thing, the biggest thing for me is after two years, we've gone from four sites down to three. We've eliminated a site. And I think that that's important, that shows, the matrix shows that, that we've, you know, we've made progress, and we, we've all kind of agreed that the Whitfield site is not a good site for these projects. So, I think that's a big step for us now. I think what we ought to do is we better, we ought to take a closer look at these specific sites based on this matrix. I think you have some direction in terms of which ones we should be taking a look at. But I do agree that we should, you know, analyze each one of these a little bit more. Perhaps, as mentioned, this is a good opportunity to start, begin that community outreach. You know, you know, I too got a number of phone calls after our meeting. And so a lot of people can just really, the biggest thing is people are concerned about the cost. I know certainly I respect and, and, and continue to do my duty of what was, you mentioned, was voted on by the town meeting, Article fourteen and fifteen back in twenty. But I think people are really concerned about the cost, and I think that's what some of this further examination will bring out. Is one site cost prohibitive? Is one site more advantageous for cost? You know, is there a benefit to choosing a particular site because of the cost? We haven't gotten to that. I know that, that would be your, your answer if I asked you, you know, about cost. And I asked you about cost at the last meeting, and I know I've learned my lesson. There is no cost yet. But again, that's part of our duty here, is that we're constantly thinking about cost because I know that's what residents are thinking about. And so, I think further examination of this matrix of those particular sites will start to give us some indication of what the cost may be so we can give that information to the residents and they can make that decision at a future meeting.
So, to get direction from the board, and I appreciate Selectman DePalma's comments that it was confusing and looking at it for the first time, I can certainly understand why he would say that. I, I, I get it. We will, I, I, I guess what I'm looking for is, do you want us to develop all three of those sites a little further from both Town Hall perspective and from Senior Center perspective? Come back with, and I mean rough layouts for both sites that you can take a look at and try and get a three D visual? I mean, is, is that what you're asking us to do? I mean, our intention was always to try and identify one site and fully get it engineered. But if you want us to spend some time engineering all three, we can. It'll take a little time, but we can, we certainly can do it.
Madam Chair, if I may, answer the question, I think it's a great question. I think this is a, we're very worthy exercise, you know, certainly for this, for this group, for the two groups that got together and, and discussed it. I think this is difficult to show residents and explain to them what's going on. I think a visual would be advantageous in that you can say, here is a potential proposal. Here's another potential proposal, and they can start to get a visual. This is difficult to talk to somebody about at Market Basket when they ask you about what took place at the meeting. That's my personal opinion on that.
Madam Chair, I guess just to try to further clarify the board's direction here. As I indicated earlier, and, you know, the buck stops with me in terms of the decision about not directing the OPM to more fully look at the fields out here. It was, like I say, it was my sense, and it was a judgment call, that we didn't want to interfere to any great degree with the fields. So, if the intent, though, is that we should look at the fields, kind of look at this whole property as a clean slate and consider any and all options on that site, then, then we can certainly do that. You know, just recognizing that if the, if this property is more fully developed, including use of the fields, there will be some period of time of displacement. I mean, that's just the reality. We can't have a, the ball fields out there developed and expect the kids to play out there. They're going to have to find another place to play. That's not to say that can't happen. It's simply to say that there will need to be an appropriation of some sort to, potentially anyways, to, to, to develop new fields. Can Yentile be used? I suspect it can to some measure, although from what I'm told from the Recreation Director, you know, the, the field over at Yentile is pretty actively used as it is. But certainly, we can look at, you know, from a programmatic standpoint offline from this, whether the other fields in town can shoulder the burden, so to speak, during this interim period when these fields are taken out of commission. But, but it would be helpful to know if, if that's a direction the board thinks we should go in.
I'm going to chime in first. I am wholeheartedly against putting, touching any field. I think we can do one project at a time. We've been waiting long enough for a senior center. I think we need to focus on that, but then the Town Hall, we, let's table that. That should be another, you know, annual meeting question. I don't think the ball fields should be touched right now. I think we need to focus our money and our spend on the question at hand, which is the senior center and the new Town Hall, and that's it. I am against touching the ball fields. The kids need to use them. We're strapped as it is. It, it's terrible. I mean, kids are playing baseball in other towns. No. So, that's just my opinion. I will not support that.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Also, with all due respect, Jeff, the fields were also identified in the Facility Master Plan. It wasn't your say-so not to touch the fields. Those were all identified in the Facility Master Plan. And these particular ones were pristine out there. They did, they complimented them. So, when we started to identify locations to put different things, this is one of the locations without touching those fields. So, you can go back to look at some of that. So, that's where a lot of that came from. And as far as these matrix go, when we, we built our high school, we used the matrix. When we did a Facility Master Plan for every location, we used the matrix. So, this is, this is, typically, this wouldn't come to you. We would just have, these are the sites that we looked at, and this is what we're going with. I know it's a little confusing, but this isn't anything out of the ordinary. This is what we've been doing. It helps us identify locations. Like Selectman Bendel said, we were able to take the Whitfield out of this for consideration.
Can I do a quick, colleagues, that we do need more information? Go ahead, Judy.
But, Madam Chair, I mean, to that point, I can appreciate Mr. Hooper's comments. I've seen these matrices before, and they do have value. And I want to be clear that it clearly does, but it's part and parcel to an overall narrative conversation. So, for example, if I were to look at this and I see the multiplier times two, I don't understand instinctually what that means, why, you know, for example, a Town Green site had certain categories that were bumped to a twenty, which would influence the total derived for that, for example. And I know the residents at home can't see that. But for example, you know, if you look at the Town Green site in the existing Town Hall for the criteria of is the site zoning appropriate for the intended use, the Town Green site received a twenty in both of the categories where the existing Town Hall received a ten. I'd like some, some context as to how that was changed. You know, for site visibility, granted, a Town, a Town Green site would have a twenty, but yet that, at the existing Town Hall, you know, the senior center in the Town Hall received a two. Well, I don't necessarily think that a senior center, to be visible or not visible in the town, necessarily defines whether or not it's an acceptable site for it to be built there. Do you follow what I'm saying? You know, I don't necessarily think that a senior center out of traffic patterns, yes, you'd want it to be, you know, in a proximity to maybe public transportation, shopping, other amenities so that seniors can get there easily. But I'm just trying to understand some of the context of how some of these, even some of these scores were derived, quite frankly, where something received out of a possible scale of one to ten, something received a twenty with a two-time multiplier. That isn't clear to me why those numbers were, were increased, as one example.
So, it wasn't one to ten, it was one, five, or ten. Some of the items that received a multiplier, we believe deserved greater weight, not for any other reason that, that they were more important. With regard to how they were scored, they were scored by each designer independently. And if you'd like me to pass the microphone down to the designers, they can answer individually for their individual inputs.
Oh, that's fine. I mean, I can appreciate that. I'm just looking at what it says. It says based on a scale of one to ten. That's what I'm reading. There's nothing here that indicates what a multiplier means and, and why. You know, I guess I'm just, I don't know. To me, the, the town, from, from my perspective, the Town Green site looks to me to be the most limited site, you know, aside from the Whit, the Whitfield. But yet, the numbers here indicate, you know, glowing scores that, that I don't know. You know, maybe I can just have a philosophical difference of opinion, but, you know, does it support the required parking facilities? I don't know anybody that thinks that School Street, the student parking lot, the Fourth of July Building, and the existing senior center and all the activities that are going on there, for example, that that really means that that parking lot is conducive to a building and adequate parking for all of the things that I just mentioned. I respectfully would disagree. You know, so that, I think that's kind of where we're at. We're, I'm just accentuating the point that I, that why I'm uncomfortable just endorsing this plan as presented with a matrix without having some context of how numbers were, you know, multiplied versus given, given a lower score than maybe what I would have expected to see.
Okay.
Madam Chair, may I just interject? I understand the importance of, don't make any mistake about it. But it's, it's worth us making sure that we turn over every stone so that we can say, we don't want the fields in there. You know, we don't know if half of that field is going to be. You know, people come up and they ask questions, and we need to provide answers. So, my point is that we should check everything out, whether it means, if it's, if it means taking all the fields, right, we're not going to do that. But if it means taking half of it, it might be a possibility. But we don't know that to be a possibility unless it's explored. And that's my only, my only point is that we need to explore every avenue in order for us to make an educated decision. You know, that's all I wish for.
I understand that, and I, I respect and agree with, with what you're saying, but I do not agree that the ball field should be used, and I never will. And that's just, that's just how, my opinion. I respect your opinion, Kevin. I'm just saying, I don't think it should be brought into this situation. I feel like it's being brought up at the eleventh hour, and it just, it's just another, it's another cost. Do we need improved fields in town? Of course we do, but it's not on the list right now. Again, we can't, we can't, we don't agree on it, you know?
With all due respect, Madam Chair, it's not brought up at the eleventh.
Well, that's just my opinion. Okay, that's my opinion.
And the idea of putting brand-new ball fields for children, it may be something that those organizations might, might like. But we don't know what it's going to be unless.
Again, I respectfully, you know, whatever. We won't have to hash this out, but I disagree with you, and I will stay firm on that. So, we can move on. I, I thank you for your opinion. We just have a difference of opinion, and that's okay. That's why we're here, that's why we're a Board of Five. Any further discussion or questions?
So, Madam Chair, it sounds like, just so that we, on the administrative side here, can get a sense, we need to go back and, and at least explore, recognizing that ultimately, you know, when this comes back to the board, it becomes a decision of the board, but at least explore what it might mean to use some or all of the fields and, and be able to offer commentary on that. And then, I guess, look more specifically at the three remaining sites in terms of some of the issues that were brought up by multiple members of the board, whether it's the, the, the issues of parking constraints at the Swain property, the, the situation that we were well aware of and that was brought up and discussed at prior meetings, which was the high water table at the Swain site. That was clearly mentioned, and I know specifically, we, we talked about that. The, it's well-known that the WCTV space there was flooded out on more than one occasion. So, we can take a look at some of those things more specifically. And it sounds like the other element that the board is looking for us to do is to attempt to engage the public more particularly in these meetings. Aside from the fact that obviously all these meetings have been open meetings, it, it sounds like the directive is to try to solicit opinions from the public in some manner.
I agree with everything but the ball field. So, if that's all that we looped into one motion, I am against.
I, I don't know that we need a motion. I'm, I'm just trying to get some clarity so that when we come back the next time where this, this goes a little bit better.
Madam Chair, I mean, if, if the town meeting is looking for direction, then what, how you characterize that, Jeff, I would say is, is the case. But I want to step back for a second, and I, and I don't want to be labeled. But I want to step back for a second and I, and I don't want to belabor the point. But when you look at these sites, I'm thinking, you know, and I admit, I've not been at every one of these meetings and I'm not part of these committees. When I'm thinking that you're looking at the town hall, I'm thinking you're looking at the entire town hall site, whatever that might include. Whether it's a ball field, a parking space, a building, you know, a basketball hoop, a pickleball court. I'm thinking, so if, if you're looking at the town hall and you're excluding the fields, your presentation should disclaimer you're excluding the fields. If you're looking at the school site and you're looking at everything, including of the Fourth of July building, the green space, the parking lot, the hill, the senior center, its parking space, it should be clear that that's what was considered. If there's any aspect of any of these sites that you're excluding, it should be disclaimer. Because honestly, until tonight, until this kind of, you know, discussion, which, you know, granted went sideways a few times, you know, I don't think Lil's incorrect for having her opinion and I don't think Kevin's incorrect for having his opinion. I think if someone said, I was looking at the town hall site, I would have thought that that would have included the ball fields as part of that because they're there and they have a municipal use and they're being used. Are they going to stay? Are they going to go? If it was evaluated with thinking that those were going to stay intact, you know, as a layperson, I'd be looking at the town hall and saying, that's big enough to do everything. That's big enough to put both buildings in, including parking. How could it not be? Well, guess what? It doesn't include the ball fields. I didn't know that until tonight. And I'm sure there are other people that don't know that either. Now, you could say, there's public meetings, you should have attended, uh, you should be more schooled up on things. You know, yeah, you can say that to me as an elected official. I'll own that, okay? But as a layperson going around in town, I can guarantee you that most people have not been involved in this chapter and verse and are not going to understand that you've carved out a significant portion of that parcel that wasn't included in any discussion. So I don't think that Selectman Kyra is trying to take ball fields away from anybody. I think he's just saying that to try and turn over every stone collectively as the town so that when we go forward, when we ask for a big purse to be paid for by the residents, that we can look people in the face with certainty and say, yes, Mr. or Mrs. Citizen, we've looked at every square inch of every parcel and we've managed our fiduciary responsibility to the nth degree and we've made sure that every decision that we've made is sound. And we don't want to duplicate or, um, redoing fields or, or take fields away from kids. But we don't want to waste the 80 grand that we spent here. We don't want to waste the 75 grand that we spent here. I, I see that as a form of due diligence. Maybe it wasn't articulated, you know, in, 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 in the manner and likeness that some people would like to hear, but I believe, having worked with Kevin, that was the spirit and intention.
I don't think that he was wanting to see the ball fields taken away. But I want to know with certainty that we've looked at everything. I agree with you that it should be noted on there what is being looked, what's being included. I agree 100%. I haven't been in this town for 20 years. That might be little for, compared to other people. I would consider town hall as the building in the parking lot. As a, a parent who has had kids play there, it's the Glen Road Park. It is not the town hall park. So to me, the town hall site is exactly the building we're sitting in and the parking lot surrounded. So to your point Judy, I, I totally respectfully agree with you that it, it's people's perception, right? It's the reality. I would never have even thought about the ball fields, whereas you did. So clearly, we're perfect examples. Obviously, people are going to think like I do and you. So you brought up a very, very good point and I do, I do agree. I think it should be, be noted. And I no, in no way think that Kevin wants to take away ball parks. But I do, and I understand looking for all feasibility. However, what happens when, hey, looks like the ballpark's good and now we're without a ball field or a football field for two years? I cannot get behind that.
No, and I, neither could I.
Yeah, that's, that's all I'm saying. So no disrespect here. It's just, that's where I was coming at. It's not a personal thing that I think you should get rid of.
And worthy chairman, I probably couldn't get behind it either, but we need to, like, as Selectman O'Connell said, turn every stone, as I said earlier, and make sure that we're going to say, no, we're not touching the ball. But we don't, we don't really know that. We don't know that it, that ball fields until it's done.
Chair.
I mean, I feel, I feel confident we can get this, get this straight.
And we will, we will. Yes, Mr. Flynn.
I think we've got some, some great directive, uh, and we'll come back with a far better presentation when we come back.
Okay.
Uh, but I, I, one item has not been discussed and that is Selectman Kyra had indicated that he wanted us to look at putting both buildings on this one site. Um, do you want us to try and fit both buildings on St. Dorothy too, um, or just this site? Cause if, if.
No, I think.
You know, I, I'm asking for direction.
Hey, if it, if it fits, I mean, that's an, that's another alternative for this board to review, right? I, I mean, we're, we're making sure that it, it may not fit on the St. Dorothy's. So you eliminate it like we eliminated the Whitfield school. You know, it, it may fit that two, two buildings fit on the Glen Road. And then that opens up, as I said, the St. Dorothy's site for brand-new fields. Uh, but we, you know, we need to know this.
Okay.
Mr. Bendel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, through you, I have a question, uh, actually for the architects, just to, uh, for the general public's benefit tonight. One of the things that was discussed and uncovered through this research of the matrix was that at the St. Dorothy's parcel, there is the possibility that there's another, uh, opening up on the other side on the Glen Road side. I wondered if you could just help the general public understand that.
I'd be happy to take that. Uh, again, my name is Lee Morrisette, Deets Architects. Um, there's the potential to access the St. Dorothy's site from, from both streets. It's not necessary. It's really up to the, the preference of the, the building committee and what is most advantageous to the site's use. Uh, we certainly don't want to introduce a cut-through for the neighborhood, uh, if that's not beneficial. Uh, to have access from both sides, it's not, not necessary. It's simply out of, uh, whatever's most convenient for the site development.
I, I, thank you. And I, and I, I hope that some folks at home appreciate that. Maybe they didn't get a chance to watch the couple, the meetings, but, and so I think it's beneficial. But Dan, I just wanted to mention that.
We did do test fits, as you are aware, for these sites.
We can bring them up.
I mean, I can bring them up. I just, with the confusion, I didn't know that would be a great idea to add more confusion by showing the sites with test fits that aren't really where the building's going to go or where the parking's going to go.
But to Mr. Hooper's point, I, I pointed out as another benefit to the matrix exercise. Thank you.
Uh, one more thing, just, uh, just to throw it out there also. Again, I'm going back to the facility master plan. Uh, one of the things about the town hall, school admin building, we were trying to develop a, a common, a civic center in Wilmington, which was that location. So by taking them all and shoehorning them in to this location, now you've taken our town hall, our school admin building, and you've put it down here away from that area. So that was just something we were also considering.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Flynn.
And I wonder if this is the right time, Madam Chair, if I may, to consider, uh, the idea that if any project was to go at the Swain Green site and would that, uh, that would almost assume if one of the projects, I guess I, I won't mention it, but if the, one of the projects went there, then the Roman House would no longer be needed, therefore perhaps that would be additional parking.
I believe, I, I believe, you know, we'd be studying that if that was the site. And we'd be studying it if we moved it up here, because it would be an excess facility.
But those are the things that I look forward to hearing from, from the, uh, further research. So thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, can I just say something to the presenters? Uh, and this is a critique from my wife over here and she thinks I'm always too angry with the, on the questions. And I'm not angry. I just think, you know, just wanted to ask some questions. Everything's good.
It's all good, Kevin. That's why we're here.
You know, I, I want to get that perception out of you.
No. Oh, we don't have public, you get away to public comments. I'm sorry. Do we? Oh, we can, okay. We can take it out of order. You have a question? Please state your name and address. Could you please state your name and address, please?
Suzanne Clark, Thursday, February 11.
Okay, Ms. Clark, go ahead.
Let me pace you with my speech, please.
No worries.
This was, the senior center was first brought up in August of 2019. We've been at this for over two years. As my mother would say, it's time to poop or get off the pot. I've been in almost every one of the public meetings. Where have you guys been? I understood the matrix perfectly. Because I was at all the meetings that led up to that. You're wasting time. You mentioned the student parking, the Fourth of July and the, uh, I can't remember what it, but anyhow, the very things that you mentioned would be displaced by putting something on the town hall, uh, the Swain site. Why can't that be recreated on this site? You know, you're so quick to do, to recreate, uh, a field house. Why not recreate the Fourth of July building if that's a concern? Why not recreate some fields that the Swains, that the, um, farmer's market can use on this site? What's going to happen to this site? I mean, the, the building's going to have to be torn down. So why not reuse it for something local? Mr. Kyra, Mr. Bendel, if you disagreed at the meeting, why didn't, why did you vote yes? I don't accept Mr. Kyra's explanation. I'm sorry. If you really disagreed with what was going on, why didn't you vote no? Shame on you. I've said more than enough.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. I appreciate your comments.
Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
Point of personal privilege. Thank you.
Yes, please.
Uh, if I may, thank, thank you. And I, and I appreciate your commentary. You have been, uh, at all the meetings and I really appreciate you taking the time out of your schedule to be there. The, yes, I did vote in favor and I can only speak for myself. I don't want to speak for anybody else. But I did vote in favor, so it would get to this next, uh, step, which is an examination, uh, of the board of selectmen to bring the entire board in. I am in favor of examining these three sites. I am in favor of eliminating the Whitfield school. And, and yes, I voted for these back in 2020. So again, this is part of the exercise that we've been charged to do. Uh, and so, uh, this is the next step in the process. So I'm, I'm sorry?
What time would it?
I'm sorry, one more time.
What a time would it on it?
Yeah, I mean, again, I don't know what the time would be on it. I think, you know, I think we have to go through this, these exercises to examine the sites and then bring the information to the residents so that they can vote on it at a future town meet. And so I, I can totally appreciate the fact that it'd be frustrating that, that maybe this isn't moving as fast as some would like. Uh, it's not moving maybe as fast as I would like. But again, we've been charged with going through this exercise, which, you know, is, part of this is the matrix. Again, getting feedback from different boards and committees, working together jointly like we did a few weeks ago. And now having our architects and our OPM who were paying really good money to go back and take a deeper dive examination of these so that we can present very well-informed, uh, articles to residents when the time comes. And so I look forward to, you know, supporting, uh, the senior center when the time comes.
Yes, in the back, please state your name and address, please.
My name is Deborah. Yourself? I live in 902 Lord's Court.
Thank you.
I just want to point out, time is not a friend to seniors. And I've said this before and I said it at the last meeting, the longer you take, the less the seniors who showed up at that original meeting of, um, was it in August, Sue? Are, are going to be around. I can't believe we're going on two years. You know, now we're talking about cost. Do you know, um, at the time that we did our presentation in December of 2019, the town of Wilmington was blessed with $38 million in treasury. Okay, that was between our free cash account and the capital stabilization fund. This was the fifth-largest treasury in the state. And we asked at that meeting for the selectmen to consider sponsoring an article to give us, with plenty of study and everything, 8.75 million dollars of free cash to build a senior center from soup to nuts, from the, you know, from all of these things that are going on here to final construction. And it wouldn't have cost anybody anything because we had the money. But you didn't want to do it. Okay, now we're dragging our feet, two years later, and there's been a bunch of seniors who have passed away, just like I said. Wilmington is a very desirable town and it's desirable in, in part, in a good part, because of the long-term seniors that put their time and effort into making this the community that it is. And our way of saying thanks is to drag our feet and say, oh, maybe we should study the ball fields. Nobody wants to use the ball fields. The ball fields have kids on them that are playing. We're paying these guys money for their expertise. I understood the matrix. Suzanne understood the matrix. Happy birthday Suzanne.
Happy birthday.
I mean, we, we, we saw, but they were looking at space. They were looking for what was the most desirable space, not parking lots. They haven't designed the buildings yet. All they're looking for is, based on this set of criteria, what would be the most advantageous space for these particular buildings? What is the problem? If there was any, any issues with community centers and we should do this and we should do that, it should have come up a long time before this. This meeting was choosing a site. The board was supposed to choose a site. And I think you guys are not doing your jobs. That's it.
Thank you. MJ.
MJ Burns, nine, Pinewood Road. Um, just a clarifying question.
Mm-hmm.
I know that in the discussions over the past two years, it's always been discussed as a senior center and then the town hall, um, school administration building. Is there any possible way, since there is so many questions, which I, I certainly agree with the board, um, that are very valid, but would it be possible to take it separately? To, to focus on the senior center, which I think probably could be negated a lot quicker than the complexity of, of housing a town hall and school administration building and the dynamics of what that looks like in the space. Would, would the board consider, and I don't know if, if it impacts the RFP, I don't, don't know how it, because it's, with one decision always impacts somebody else.
Right.
But can it be prioritized for the board to fa- to focus on first initially? The senior center, the location and the specs for that, to drive that forward. And then, not to say we have to stop everything with the town hall school administration, but that, I think that should be in the, I would ask you to consider that that to be in the forefront because I think that's a, it's more easier negotiable project than trying to take the two projects together. I know one building impacts where the other one goes, but I still think that can be done and the, and progress for the senior center can be made if we just split it up and, you know, I mean, I, not just, these poor people work at the Roman House. I love them to death and they know it. I'll give them umbrellas. But I, I really do think that after 20 years of, I've looked in this community, a senior center along with a, a North Wilmington substation has always been considered. I, I, I do think that this is probably the time and perhaps we're at that point where we can focus on this and get that project going. And then, as Mr. Kyra pointed out, and, and Ms. O'Donnell too, consider those other variances that would contribute to the town hall, school administration building. So I think what's happening, it's all getting convoluted and it's going to slow down both projects. So I just, uh, respectfully ask the board to perhaps consider something that can be done. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Unless there's other public comments.
Any more comments? Questions?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I would just respectfully, uh, take exception to the idea that perhaps we're dragging our feet. I would say that, you know, for the first time in more than 50 years, we're as close as we could probably get to having a senior center. Not only do we have a committee working towards it, we've hired and invested town money into an OPM. We've hired and invested money into an architect. We've had the joint meeting. We have the matrix. We've sat here for more than an hour with volunteer committees giving recommendations who have spent hours putting this together so that we can have a very well-informed, uh, article at a future date. The town board of selectmen have now given feedback and direction through the town manager to our OPM so that they can come back and give us more detail. So in my opinion, I think we're closer than we ever have been before. So I, the suggestion that perhaps we're dragging our feet, I guess I'll only speak for myself, but I would take exception with that.
And the projects are separate and the senior center is tracking ahead and, and will because it's less complex.
All right, thank you, everybody. Um, if there's no further questions or discussions, we will move forward with our agenda.
Thank you.
We're going to do any other motions this evening on this. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate it. Thank you all for being here. We're going to go, move on to communications. Mr. Hall.
Okay, so under communications, the first item you have before you, uh, is a memo from our finance director. is a memo from our Finance Director, Brian Perry, providing a status on the most recent OPEB actuarial review. These reviews are required every couple of years. As you recall, OPEB deals with the unfunded obligations for health insurance. The positive is, as of 6/30/2020, the town's liability was $110,491,909. As of 6/30/2021, when this evaluation was completed, that number was reduced to $104,83,962, or a reduction of $6,407,947. So he notes also that one of the points working in our favor is our continued discipline in putting money into the OPEB trust fund. That further reduces the obligation by almost $10 million, bringing the current obligation down to $94,120,285. Next is correspondence from me to the board with regard to town council training. You'll recall, this was brought up at prior meetings and the board requested to table a discussion. There were some questions about the ability of town council to provide training at various times. And in consultation with Mark Rich, the point person at KP, he notes that they are able to provide training both during the workday and in the evening. As you know, typically, the training during the workday is slated for personnel to the extent that the topic is germane to them. And whereas the evening trainings tend to be directed towards volunteer boards and committees that may have topics germane to them. When this was brought forward, initially, it was my recommendation that the board consider a training for our personnel referenced as discrimination/harassment avoidance training. This would be, again, for personnel. And the other recommendation was the topic of all you need to know about town meeting but were afraid to ask. Those were two recommendations. Certainly, if the board has other thoughts, I know there was some discussion at one of the prior meetings about the prospect of another training on the unacceptable ways. So if the board is interested in making a decision tonight, there is a board to consider. Next on the agenda, under correspondence, is a memo from me with regard to the MBTA Advisory Board and its time commitments there. So in consultation with Brian Kane, the Executive Director from the Advisory Board, he notes that the, right now, the Advisory Board is waiting for Governor Baker's appointment to the MBTA Board of Directors. They're the governing authority. Typically, so they're not meeting at present until that appointment is made. Typically, there are four meetings of the Advisory Board itself, but then there are subcommittees that meet in addition to that. So the time commitment may be between six and eight meetings a year. More recently, the meetings have been done virtually via Zoom. Next, under Correspondence, is a memo from me with regard to an update on the electric vehicle project that we're working on with RMLD. I would note that the Department of Environmental Protection has approved the sites that we submitted, one being here at the town hall, the other being at the library. There is a license agreement that RMLD has provided to me for review. It's a 30-year license, which would essentially authorize RMLD to use these particular sites for the electric charging stations. Then we have correspondence from the Metropolitan, the Metropolitan Boston Transportation Authority with regard to upcoming elections. It notes there are multiple seats open, one being for the Boston region, currently held by the City of Newton. Another in the Boston region, currently held by the Town of Arlington. One seat on the Three Rivers Interlocal Council, currently held by Norwood. And the subgroup that Wilmington is a part of, the North Suburban Planning Council, is currently held by the City of Woburn. The closing date for nominations is October 1st. Elections, voting will take place between the 11th of October and the 26th, and the announcements will be made on the 27th of October. We have correspondence, actually a press release from the Planning and Conservation Department with regard to the town's annual cleanup day. It's scheduled for October 2nd, beginning at 10:00 a.m., rain or shine. A conservation commission is seeking volunteers and leaders to help beautify Wilmington's parks and conservation land by removing litter and debris. Volunteers are asked to target specific locations in town. Please refer to our website for locations on the map, and they provide the website. If you're unable to attend the cleanup on October 2nd, feel free to enjoy the town's resources and help clean them up anytime you like. In addition, we have communication from the Reading Municipal Light Company. This is an annual event. It's their Public Power Week. It's an event celebrating the not-for-profit, community-owned electric utilities such as RMLD. It occurs October 4th through the 10th. Again, this year, in light of the COVID situation, it's virtual, and they provide information about programs that are available to interested members of the community. And then finally, we have correspondence from Verizon with regard to some program changes that took effect immediately. WWDP Evine Live Boston has changed to WWDP Shop HQ on channels 46 and 546. And they note that this is provider-driven, and information has been submitted to subscribers. Then this brings us to the Boards to Consider. The first board to consider was the modification to the voting precincts, which the board took a vote on. I do have a document here that'll need to be signed by members of the board.
Any discussion on this?
So next, under Board to Consider, is the recommendation on the senior center and town hall school admin. Obviously, that'll be taken under advisement pending further information. Then we have a board to consider the application of Jared Rankin as a constable. And there's information that each board member received about his request. I would note that the, as is the course for these kind of applications, the Police Department has done a background check, and there's no basis for denial in terms of background. I think one of the, quite frankly, one of the questions that I have is that the, one of the individuals that's referenced as a, as a reference, we do not have any information in the town clerk's office establishing that they're a resident of Wilmington. The mass general law that pertains to constables requires five references from the town for which they're seeking to be a constable. One of those references needs to be an attorney, which he does provide. And then four remaining residents from the town. So the board may wish to either accept or make an appointment or, in light of the question about the reference, direct me to follow up with him about confirmation.
Open it up for discussion. Gary, Mr. DePalma?
Seeing that this application isn't completed, I would recommend that we don't issue the constable appointment until the application is completed.
Any further comments or discussion?
This is Slakman O'Connell. I believe that it's clearly articulated by the manager as to what's included here. I would agree with Slakman DePalma that I would view this as incomplete. I'm sure this gentleman is worthy of consideration. However, the application criteria is very, very clear set forth. And in the absence of it being complete, I would table this request and give him an opportunity to provide the necessary information to deem this application complete for consideration.
Okay, next item under Board to Consider. Suzanne Neal is seeking to use the Town Common and Gazebau on Saturday, October 16th. And she notes in her correspondence here, this is the Public Square Rosary is proposing to sponsor this event. It's a prayer service that would take place on the Town Common. Originally, there was another event to occur that day, which was the Kiwanis was having a bike rodeo. I received an email today indicating that they have, they're canceling that, and they're looking to do it in the spring. So there are no other activities, other than the, I believe it's a soccer game happening at 3:00 in the afternoon, but that shouldn't conflict.
I am against this for the reason that I did just, I was curious about this Americana and they are not an all-inclusive organization. In fact, they believe that homosexual sin and are, you know, evil and things like that. So I personally do not want them to do this. I don't support it. If they're not going to be an all-inclusive, that's just my opinion, of course. I'm just saying, I just want it on record that I don't support it.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, is there a second?
Second for discussion?
Yes, please, Mr. Bendel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just point out that certainly, in terms of the request, we need to take it on its face value, even if we agree or disagree with the person's opinions or position that they may take on an issue. And certainly, seeing that this is a public property, we do have, they are entitled to rights too. So whether I agree with it or not
No, no, I agree.
is not for discussion.
No, no, I totally agree. I just want it to be known that I just, I don't approve it.
I just want to make the final point that, you know, certainly, I don't know if the board should be making decisions based on whether they could grant a request based on what they believe of a certain group. So then we could say, you could turn around and say to the next group, well, we don't believe in your stance on this issue, so we're not going to grant it. So I just think it sets a precedent that we ought to be careful of. This is a public property, and I think that we should be, whether we agree with the issue or not, that we have to be respectful of.
And I agree with you. I just want it to be known that I don't agree with what they stand for. So as, that's just my opinion. And I'm going to stand by my, you know, I think they have every right to hold this on the common. I just personally do not support it. So I appreciate your comments, and you are absolutely right. Okay, do I have a second?
I have a further for discussion, if I may, through you to the town manager. In terms of something like this, because it's town property, do they have to have a police detail for this? You know, because if they're crossing over on Middlesex Ave. And then it also says that, you know, following pandemic guidelines, I mean, is this, is there a mask mandate for this? Just seeking to understand some of those questions.
I have talked to the police chief, made him aware of it, as I do on all these types of things that are requested. He will have, make the sergeant in the staff aware that it is going on. He did not indicate they needed to have a police detail. I suspect, from what I'm told, the crowd is something in the order of 100, perhaps 150 people. But when I communicated with him about this last week, he did not believe a detail was required.
Okay.
Question through you. And for this religious event, it has come before the board a number of times in the past. We never did a detail there before, right?
Right, I believe this is the second time, Beverly? The second time that this has come before us, and there was not a detail last year.
Thank you.
Okay. Kevin made a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I think so.
Oh, sorry, Greg's second. All in favor? Roll call, please.
Judy O'Connell, yes.
Kevin Kyra, yes.
Greg Bendel, yes.
Lilly Maselli, no. So moved.
Okay, next is...
I didn't hear, what was Gary DePalma's vote? I didn't.
He was a yes.
Okay. Sorry, Gary, I didn't hear.
No problem, Kevin.
Okay, so the next one is, let's see, what's in place here? Next is Board to Consider, designate a representative to the MBTA Advisory Board.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
At our last meeting, I think, and if I'm wrong, Judy, let me know, but I think, Judy, did you volunteer or you take it under advisement to look into this?
You are correct. I said I would take it under advisement to look into it based on the information that town manager Hall has provided. If someone were to nominate me for this, I would accept the nomination.
I would nominate Judy O'Connell.
A second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Roll call, please.
Kevin Kyra, yes.
Judy O'Connell, yes.
Garrett DePalma, yes.
Greg Bendel, yes.
Lilly Maselli, yes. Thank you, Judy.
Thank you, Judy.
Next is a Board to Consider, scheduling the training for town council. So I'd be looking for, if the board is so inclined to identify topics that you would like town council to cover with the town between now and the end of the fiscal year.
I haven't attended any of the trainings, obviously, so I am, I will defer to the board. I'm okay with doing anything. So if anybody has any strong opinions, you know, please bring it up.
Madam Chair, this is Judy O'Connell. Just a point of clarification through you to the town manager. Are these trainings intended for not just selectmen, but for all town personnel in town hall? So you're trying to come up with subject matter that's relevant to a large population of potential attendees? Is that correct?
Right, the ideal situation certainly is to identify, you know, key topics that are timely and of value to as many, either personnel or volunteers as possible. Certainly, just given the topics, there are some topics that are, you know, not necessarily germane to the staff here at the town hall, for example, but maybe germane to the planning board and Board of Appeals and so on. We did have a discussion at one of the, or a training at, I think, last year that dealt with flawless decisions with respect to boards of appeals and so on. So we try to cover both bases.
Sure. The recommendations that you had set forth with the harassment, discrimination, avoidance training, obviously, I'd be supportive of that because I understand why, you know, from a town hall personnel perspective, that would make sense. Everything you're always wanting to know about town meeting but were afraid to ask, I'd be particularly interested in that as a selectman. There are other ones that are on this list that certainly, you know, I wouldn't, I would be more than willing to attend. So I don't know what the pleasure of the overall board is, but I could get behind the two that you recommended. I'm more interested in the town meeting one out of the two because I don't know that the harassment, discrimination would really apply to me. But I want to be a team player and be supportive of everything that pertains to town personnel in general. Those are my thoughts.
Any further discussion or opinions? Then I'm going to set forth a motion to accept the recommendations for training that Mr. Hall has put forth. Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion's made.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Roll call, please.
Kevin Kyrie, yes.
Judy O'Connell, yes.
Garrett DePalmer, yes.
Greg Bendel, yes.
Lilia Misselli, yes.
Next is a board to consider signing an alcohol beverage control commission licensing authority certification relative to the change in officer slash director for the 99 Restaurant of Boston LLC and doing business is 99 Restaurant and Pub, 144 Lowell Street. We have these circumstances periodically where a franchise restaurant with restaurants across the state, the ABCC will do a kind of a blanket request rather than going to each individual community. So that's the situation here. There's a couple of individuals within the corporate structure at 99 that are changing their status specifically. The change involves the appointment of Wendy Harkness as chief administrative officer, secretary and LLC manager of the licensed entities, and the removal of Goodlow M. Party as general counsel, secretary and LLC manager of the same. So the ABCC has reviewed this, as I understand it, has no concerns. If the board does approve this, it will require your signatures.
Any discussion? Okay, motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Gary, second. Roll call, please.
Kevin Kyrie, yes.
Judy O'Connell, yes.
Garrett DePalmer, yes.
Greg Bendel, yes.
Lilia Misselli, yes.
The next item under board to consider is a request from Michael Berry, co-founder and director of Misfit Artist Company, to use the Swain Green on Saturday, October 23rd, 2021. You may recall, he's made similar requests in the past. His most recent request was a student production of Julius Caesar. They, the group involves children from elementary school all the way up to high school, and they put on these various plays. He didn't specify what their production would be in this instance, but he did indicate that it would be about three hours and then some time beforehand for setup and time afterwards for takedown of whatever they put up.
Can I open up for discussion?
I don't have an issue with considering granting the request. You know, I heard what you just stated, Jeff, in terms of time before, three hours, and then time after. I'd be more inclined to have a time assigned to this so that you, the police and fire know when this is happening. I don't know how you feel about that, if you want to just, if it's okay to leave it open, but typically, there's a beginning and end date, you know, in terms of time.
So I did reach out after receiving this email, sent him a request for further information about the specifics on the time. I had not heard back from him. I guess at this point, my suggestion is that if the board wishes to grant it for the date that, and it looks like he's looking at the particular date of the 23rd of October, that I would follow up with him and confirm the actual times. And as always, when these types of things come up, I notify the public, typically Public Works. If there's electricity required, George Hooper gets notified, and certainly, the police and fire would get notified.
Okay, so therefore, I would make a motion to grant the request as presented for Saturday, October 23rd, 2021, to include time parameters set forth as deemed appropriate by the town manager.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Kevin Kyrie, yes.
Judy O'Connell, yes.
Garrett DePalmer, yes.
Greg Bendel, yes.
Lilia Misselli, yes.
Then the final board to consider is a request from the Wilmington High School Girls' Basketball Club to use the municipal parking lot for a fundraising car wash on Sunday, October 3rd, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
So moved.
Okay, second. Roll call.
Kevin Kyrie, yes.
Judy O'Connell, yes.
Garrett DePalmer, yes.
Greg Bendel, yes.
Lilia Misselli, yes. Okay, we already had public comments, and there's no further public comments, since there's no one left here in the room. Any announcements? Okay, no announcements, and now we'll move on to new business. Is there any new business? No new business. Now we will move on to important dates.
Important dates, we have September 29th, the Economic Development Committee Town Hall Auditorium, 6:00 p.m. As noted earlier, October 2nd is the townwide cleanup, starting at 10:00 a.m. October 6th is a brush drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Again, another brush drop off on the 9th of October, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. October 9th is a flu clinic Town Hall Auditorium, 9:00 a.m. to noon. October 11th is Columbus Day, town offices are closed. October 12th, next board of selectmen's meeting, Room 9, 7:00 p.m. Brush drop offs again on the 13th, Old Main Street, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And again on the 16th, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. And now we'll turn it over to Slakman Bendel for our salute to service.
I have one question for Mr. Hall.
Sure, Mr. DePalmer?
The, some of the alcohol licenses we approved this evening, do we have to come into your office and sign them if we weren't there this evening?
Yes.
Very good.
Well, actually, you know, the, maybe the better approach would be via DocuSign. If you're good with that, we can do it via DocuSign.
Excellent, very good, thank you.
Mr. Slakman Bendel?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and it is my privilege on behalf of the board of selectmen and the residents of the town to recognize Francis E. Downs Jr. tonight for our salute to service. Frank served in the United States Marines from 1977 to 1981, where he earned the Good Conduct Medal and a Rifle Expert Badge. If anybody knows Frank, though, they know that he does a ton of work behind the scenes for our veterans and our residents, whether it's a welcome home sign for any of our veterans coming home, standing out for any of the KIA's arriving back in anywhere in New England, to helping with flags or any of the veterans ceremonies that take place throughout the year. He does all of this without any recognition, or doesn't want any recognition, rather, but tonight, I thought it was fitting that we recognize him, and we let him know that we thank him for a service to our country and to our community. So it's my privilege to present the salute to service to Mr. Frank Downs.
Thank you, Mr. Bendel, and thank you, Mr. Downs, for your service to our country. That will wrap up tonight's meeting. Thank you and have a good night.
Is there a motion?
Oh, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Roll call, one final roll call.
Kevin Kyrie, yes.
Judy O'Connell, yes.
Garrett DePalmer, yes.
Greg Bendel, yes.
Lilia Misselli, yes. Thank you and have a good night.